Take two. Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries, and International Intergroup Relations. If you would like to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Just a reminder, no one may approach today at any time during this hearing. Chair Rivera, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. I am Councilmember Carlina Rivera, Chair of the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries, and International Intergroup Relations. Welcome to our Oversight Hearing, how libraries empower New Yorkers to become informed voters and engaged citizens. As most of you know, library services in New York City are provided through three independent systems: the Brooklyn Public Library, which serves the borough of Brooklyn; the New York Public Library, which serves the boroughs of Manhattan, Staten Island, and the Bronx; and the Queens Public Library, which serves the great borough of Queens. As a New Yorker, I could not be more proud of everything that these three systems bring to our city. Collectively, these institutions offer free and equitable access to a vast array of resources and programming, serving as essential hubs for learning and community building. Beyond providing books, periodicals, and electronic resources, they offer programs ranging from early childhood literacy to workforce development, catering to a diverse population across all five boroughs. However, libraries are not only places for accessing information, but also for learning about and actively participating in our democratic society. What we are here to talk about today is the incredible work they do in facilitating civic engagement and in bringing together community residents, particularly those from underserved neighborhoods and marginalized populations to make important changes in their local communities. Each library system has undertaken significant initiatives dedicated to educating and empowering voters. I believe these services are also critical in helping to get out the vote on November 5th. As we delve into today's hearing, I am eager to explore the myriad ways these libraries have prepared our communities for the upcoming election and how they continue to support the broader civic engagement of New Yorkers. Furthermore, the committee aims to understand how the City Council can bolster these efforts, ensuring that our libraries remain vibrant centers of civic life. Before moving into this important hearing topic, I would like to note that this week is Ban Books Week across the nation. In February, this committee held a hearing on New York City libraries' fight against banning books. It was incredible. I was honored to chair that hearing and to commend the work that our libraries were doing in helping to fight book banning that was occurring every day, including way outside of our city limits and within them. We continue to be proud of our library's ongoing leadership in this national arena. So I encourage everyone, please go to your local library, see the incredible things that they're doing, and there you could also register to vote. And the registration deadline is October 26th. Do your research, register to vote, be involved, and you can start right in your local library. Now I want to acknowledge my colleagues in the committee who are present. We are joined by Councilmember Hanif via Zoom and, of course, Councilmembers Hudson and Carr. I want to thank the committee staff. They work really hard in putting together every hearing, and especially this hearing: Christina Yalamati, the committee's counsel; Regina Paul, the committee's policy analyst; and Sandra Gray, the committee's finance analyst. I also want to thank my staff: Katie Loeb, my chief of staff; and Edward Amador, my director of legislation. I would like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person today to fill out a white appearance card, which is located on the desk of the sergeant-at-arms near the entrance of this room. Even if you have already registered in advance that you will be testifying in person today, please still fill out a slip, and I want to thank all the sergeants for their work always. I am also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. And as a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record. We're ready to start with a panel of representatives from the libraries, and please say your name for the record when you start your testimony, and you may begin.
Scott McLeod. Good morning. I am the Director of Civic Engagement at Queens Public Library. On behalf of our President and CEO Dennis M. Walcott, thank you Chair Rivera and the members of this committee. Thank you to the Chair and members of this committee for the opportunity to testify about the key role libraries play in engaging and empowering the residents of New York City. Public libraries are the last truly democratic institution. Regardless of circumstance or background, anyone can visit our buildings and digital platforms to access the information and resources they need to grow, learn, and improve their lives. That is why we are tremendously thankful for the restoration and baselining of our operational funds in this year's budget. Your incredible support allows Queens Public Library to continue offering free, reliable, and open spaces throughout the borough, at minimum six days a week. As was mentioned earlier, this week is Ban Books Week, an especially poignant moment as attempts to limit expression and silence marginalized viewpoints continue at unprecedented levels at libraries across the nation. Queens Public Library is dedicated to protecting the freedom to read, ensuring unrestricted access to diverse perspectives, and learning free from censorship throughout the year. This week, our efforts spotlighting this critical issue include a banned books movie festival, storytimes, a book giveaway, teen programming, and making a selection of banned books available in our digital collections to our users with no weights. Additionally, the library has launched a banned books library card design contest, where the winning artwork will be featured on a special edition QPL card. Our libraries help ensure that everyone has the opportunity to participate fully in our democracy. Our customers know if they need trustworthy resources, they just need to go to their closest QPL location. As discourse in the country has become increasingly divided and politicized, QPL remains the steady force in ensuring New Yorkers are educated about government and the issues facing society. Working closely with the city's Campaign Finance Board's NYC Votes, the library distributes candidate information guides and educational literature ahead of both primary and general elections. The library creates special blog posts that provide an overview of what voters should expect, including the offices being sought, ballot measures, and useful links. This information is also amplified via email and social media to reach as many people as possible. Ultimately, we want our customers to be able to make informed decisions when they enter the voting booth. Queens Public Library annually participates in National Voter Registration Day to raise awareness of the November general election and to encourage people to register to vote in time for Election Day. Last week, we continued this tradition by having voter registration forms, one-pagers on how to complete those forms, and absentee ballot request forms readily available to the public. Ahead of September 17th, our public service staff is educated and prepared to answer questions from the public, whether it is about the registration deadline or how they can find their polling sites for the upcoming election. Critical to NVRD and leading up to the registration deadlines are collaborations with community-based organizations that are also committed to conducting nonpartisan efforts. Over the years, QPL has worked with NYC Votes, the League of Women Voters, Woodside on the Move, and many other groups on NVRD actions. As centers and community in every neighborhood, libraries are natural voting locations. QPL has longstanding relationships with the Board of Elections to allow our buildings to serve this important purpose. This past primary, 11 libraries welcomed Queens residents to vote, and three were early voting sites. We look forward to continuing this partnership with the BOE in November to help individuals seeking to exercise their right to vote in a known and trusted environment. A vibrant democratic society requires a well-informed citizenry with access to unbiased and undistorted information, which is becoming increasingly challenging in a social media-dominated world. In 2021, the entire city was preparing for the implementation of ranked choice voting, including for the offices of the mayor, comptroller, public advocate, as well as council members. With the advent of RCV in Queens and the likelihood of confusion and misconception circulating about the new method, it was imperative that we educate the public and reinforce the facts. Similar to our election lead-up efforts, QPL developed web content outlining the process, its background, the applicable offices, and resources to learn about RCV. Ahead of the special election, first using RCV, QPL President Dennis Walcott led a virtual discussion with Rank the Vote NYC and CBOs with deep ties to communities in the borough. The conversation had more than 1,200 live and post-live views and is still available to anyone who was interested. That same year, QPL along with BPL and NYPL were proud recipients of Go Vote NYC grant to assist with public education and outreach for the June primary and November general election. Together, we sponsored a series of four RCV virtual sessions in Mandarin, Cantonese, Bengali, Spanish, and Haitian Creole. We also jointly hosted programs that prompted attendees to consider how voting has long-term consequences in regards to local issues. A session with our Queens Memory Project entitled NYC Flood Resiliency: Ask the Experts involved a dynamic discussion about flood resiliency in the city, including history, policy, and neighborhood-level actions. This topic was especially poignant since Hurricane Ida had impacted Queens residents in the month prior. Crucial to our voter education outreach is connecting with Queens' most vulnerable populations. The library's integrated English literacy and civic education classes incorporate topics ranging from the history of the United States, citizen rights and responsibilities, Election Day, holidays and their significance, voter registration, mock conversations with polling site officials, and more. This program has an enrollment of 280 students a year. However, the overall need for ESLWELC programming in the borough is overwhelming. In fiscal year 2023, the library had a total attendance of nearly 59,000 to our English learner classes, and we consistently have a system-wide waiting list of approximately 200, with half from our Flushing library. Through QPL's partnership with the Mayor's Office on Immigrant Affairs, we are able to expand our reach by offering We Speak NYC, an English language learning program that features civic-focused instruction. Since beginning to offer this in the spring, QPL has served 868 students. As part of our efforts at Rikers Correctional Facility, we work with a broader coalition to encourage participation in the voting process. QPL supports this initiative by distributing voter resources during our routine library service, as well as by creating content for candidate and voter guides that supplement NYC Votes materials and adheres to the facility's approved guidelines ahead of the election. The library's teen centers are essential spaces for our young adult users to freely express themselves and develop their interests. Earlier this year, our Central and Long Island City Teen Centers partnered with NYC Votes to host Civics for All, a student-focused training on the basics of civic engagement and voter registration. Ahead of the upcoming election, the Teen Center at our Cambria Heights Library is offering a teen civic education series to help build a foundation of understanding government, the significance of being involved in one's community, and more. This first session, called Mythbusters: Political Parties, examines the political party system in the United States and offers the chance for teens to see where their ideologies most closely align. In following sessions, they will also be provided with the opportunity to register to vote. Our libraries also serve as trusted, accessible hubs for community convening and civic engagement. We have instituted service learning initiatives in which individuals not only engage in meaningful service experiences, but also in reflection that leads to greater understanding of their ability to have an impact on their communities. For example, World of Work for Teens, which received an Urban Libraries Council Top Innovation Award, combines college coursework and professional development workshops while engaging teens in service projects. And our Talking Period Initiative prepares young people to be menstrual equity advocates and community champions. In addition, Queens Public Library hosts online community education and leadership workshops to equip residents with information and resources to help them prepare to assume roles in city government, civic groups, and community organizations. These sessions have trained more than 500 and reached participants in the United States, Europe, and Australia. Our workshops, forums, and resources focused on building leadership capacity, address topical issues such as the child welfare system in New York City, and provide media training to develop skills such as executive presence and communications. Since 2022, Queens Public Library has partnered with the Food Bank for New York City, the city's largest hunger relief organization, to address food insecurity by conducting mobile food pantry distributions with library staff and volunteers at branches across the borough. Over the past two years, we have served 5,700 households and reached nearly 28,500 people so far. Throughout the year, QPL staff and our government and community partners leverage our spaces to empower customers as well-informed citizens through public resource tabling and informational workshops. The library works closely with the New York City Civic Engagement Commission to support the people's money through community outreach and awareness. Last year, at 23 QPL locations across the borough, residents voted on how to spend taxpayer money, and this year, we conducted a digital campaign encouraging library users to submit their votes online. For over a decade, the library has partnered closely with the NYC Council on Participatory Budgeting by hosting information sessions and providing polling sites during Voting Week. In addition, local civic organizations hold regular meetings and community activations at our libraries. In the past two years, these public meetings, combined with the library's civic programming, have garnered attendance of more than 2,000. Our elected officials, including Speaker Adams and members of this committee, regularly host mobile office hours and resource distribution events at our libraries, thereby promoting civil discourse and facilitating opportunities for direct constituent access to and engagement with their representatives. In closing, at Queens Public Library, we believe it is one of our highest responsibilities to provide the 2.4 million residents of the borough free, trusted resources and spaces to discover and explore their interests and to better understand diverse ideas and viewpoints. We remain committed to collaborating with our government and community-based partners to help individuals be active, informed, and engaged citizens. Thank you Chair for the opportunity to testify today.
Dr. Brandi McNeil. Good morning. My name is Dr. Brandi McNeil, and I am Deputy Director of Branch Programs and Services at the New York Public Library. I would like to thank City Council Speaker Adams, Chair Rivera, and members of the committee for the opportunity to testify this morning on how libraries empower New Yorkers to become informed voters and engaged citizens. As trusted nonpartisan institutions, public libraries play a vital role in supporting a healthy democracy. Libraries provide access to resources, knowledge, and spaces that empower individuals to become active participants in their communities. With the rise of book bans across the country and the proliferation of misinformation, this work has become more important than ever. The library's efforts to inform voters and engage citizens are guided by three pillars: civic knowledge, civic attitudes, and civic actions. These pillars set the parameters for our efforts to promote equitable access to information for voters across the neighborhoods we serve and innovative civic programming. At the heart of democracy is our responsibility as citizens to participate in the political process at all levels of government. But according to the New York City Campaign Finance Board, voter turnout in New York City is only 60.8% for presidential elections. These numbers are even lower in local elections, with only 29.6% of eligible voters participating in mayoral elections, and drops further within low-income neighborhoods, communities of color, youth, older adults, and voters with disabilities. As an institution with 88 neighborhood locations across the Bronx, Manhattan, and Staten Island, the library is positioned to engage the patrons and local communities in the electoral process through public programs and outreach that encourage participation and equip New Yorkers with the tools and knowledge they need to make informed decisions. During the 2021 primaries, which first introduced ranked choice voting and as part of the Go Vote NYC initiative, the three New York City library systems introduced a number of voter education and civic engagement programs and outreach efforts that included RCV training sessions and panel discussions that targeted low-turnout segments of the electorate. Voting engagement events leading up to and amid the primaries were coordinated with the help of our cosponsors and community partners at Queens Public Library, Brooklyn Public Library, the Campaign Finance Board, the Hispanic Federation, Gothamis, and Citizens Union, among others. Since then, NYPL has maintained its partnership with CFB's New York City Votes Initiative to host virtual training events to prepare voters for local elections and to share voting resources like New York City Votes, print materials, and digital toolkits. From September 2023 to July 2024, New York City held eight voter-focused events with civic partners like the League of Women Voters. These events included 101 trainings that covered ballot proposals and panel discussions on voter engagement. NYPL also coordinated the New York City Board of Elections to distribute close to 10,000 voter registration forms in branches for the 2023 November elections. Ahead of this year's general election, CFB's New York City Votes will hold a voter mobilization training for library staff in October that will cover voter registration and best practices to inspire voter engagement. These trainings are a valuable resource for the offerings and conversations that our branch staff have with eligible voters. Branches like the Andrew High School Braille and Talking Book Library are also hosting important conversations with disability activists about the barriers to voting faced by people with disabilities and how New Yorkers can make a difference. This year, both National Voter Registration Day and Constitution Day fell on September 17th, creating a fortuitous opportunity to share voting resources and materials from our collections, including a handwritten copy of the first draft of the Bill of Rights and a book list covering subjects from the ratification of the Constitution to the enfranchisement of African-Americans and women. All open branches across the system distributed voter registration forms and promoted online voter registration using multilingual signs in Spanish, Chinese, Bangla, Arabic, and Russian to help close language barriers and provide access to computers and wireless internet service. In the digital space, our voter information pages provide information about voting requirements, how to research election issues using the library's resources, and voting for teens, just to name a few. Beyond programs and initiatives targeting voter engagement are a host of services, campaigns, and offerings that focus on citizenship and civic engagement more broadly. In FY24, we held 481 programs with 6,788 participants, and they were held to engage communities with civics through conversation and learning. These programs covered topics such as everyday civics, activism, New York City Government 101, and citizenship study groups. In April 2023, NYPL launched the Innovation Lab, initiative that expands our support for staff innovation, encourages experimentation at the library, and celebrates staff ingenuity and creativity. Our first innovation challenge for FY24 focused on civics and civic action, building on our existing strengths to encourage democratic participation. As a result, branches have held programs like free Spanish citizenship classes, application help, and a civic festival where patrons learned about civics and how local government shapes public policy to programs that promote free access to citizenship applications. One of the most indispensable components of our work to engage citizens is the preservation of the freedom to read and access to books for all. While equitable access to information has always been essential to NYPL's mission, it has become increasingly vital to the survival of our democracy, which is currently being threatened by book bans across the country. Books educate people about the world around them, they invite discussion and dialogue, and challenge readers to consider different worldviews and perspectives. One of the most alarming aspects of recent book bans is that the overwhelmingly majority of the titles being challenged center the experiences of marginalized communities, in particular LGBTQ+ Americans and people of color. These book bans are often a feature of a larger context of efforts to explicitly ban or even criminalize the teaching of such topics as race, gender, and the identities of LGBTQ+ people. The censorship of these topics keeps marginalized communities from seeing themselves represented in our country's literature and culture. We know from history, for example, how important the voices of those most marginalized were to the advancement of voting and civil rights. Perhaps most importantly, these bans deprive others of the opportunity to learn and empathize with their experience. This time last year, in response to the alarming rise of book bans and challenges throughout the country, we launched Books for All to underscore the importance of reading and access for all and the vital role that public libraries play in our democracy. The campaign made banned titles free for readers nationwide to borrow through our free e-reader app. It had a major focus on teen youth and engagement. In recognition of the fact that the majority of books currently being banned or challenged are young adult books. This week, in coordination with Ban Books Week and as part of our continued commitment to protect the freedom to read, we kicked off our annual Teen Ban Book Club. The Teen Ban Book Club shines a spotlight on young adult titles that have been the subject of bans or challenges. Free copies of this year's book club pick will be available for teens at their local branches and to NYPL cardholders on Libby, accompanied by a discussion guide and culminating in an online author talk led by teens. We also launched an online exhibition that explores censorship in the United States through four themed sections: literature and film, sexual and reproductive freedom, archiving against censorship, and white supremacy and war, colonialism, and protest. The exhibit will be accompanied by a curriculum guide and temporary displays of material in the Stephen A. Schwartzman Building. On October 19th, the New York, Brooklyn, and Queens Public Libraries, in partnership with the American Library Association, their United Against Book Bans campaign and the Association for Rural and Small Libraries, will organize a first-of-its-kind Freedom to Read National Day of Action to unite against book bans. NYPL will hold a rally at the Stephen A. Schwartzman Building, share information about the freedom to read with patrons at tabling events across the system, and take to social media to share more information about book bans taking place across the country. As noted previously, young New Yorkers are a segment of the population with particularly low voter turnout rates. This is why NYPL launched Teen Civic Ambassadors, a program that offers paid internships for teens to help develop job readiness and leadership skills with a focus on library resources, civics, and peer-to-peer engagement. As community hubs and third places for teens outside school and home, libraries coordinate teen-led programs focused on building civic knowledge for our youngest eligible voters. In spring 2024, NYPL's Teen Civic Ambassadors worked across 16 branches in low-income neighborhoods and offered over 50 programs serving over 250 teens. Teens hosted programs on a range of topics from women's history to art programs focused on supporting mental well-being. This past summer, in partnership with New York City Votes, the library's inaugural Teen Civic Ambassador Summer Cohort held 15 voter registration drives and created programs focused on how to involve their peers in community issues. The Teen Civic Ambassadors also facilitated an immersive and thoughtful panel discussion with local city council members on the importance of civic action and ways to effect change. Our teens were able to learn directly from council members representing the most diverse city council in New York's history. We want to thank you again, Chair Rivera, for participating in that panel. And we want to thank the City Council for their support through the years, which has been integral to our ability to innovate these programs that speak directly to the city's youth. The library's Centers for Educators in Schools bring civics to life for school librarians, educators, and students by teaching them to conduct civics research using NYPL databases, resources, and using the library's primary sources to create civics-forward guides on subjects like Black New Yorkers commemorating emancipation, Jewish activism in housing reform, and censorship and the freedom to read in the 20th century. Our Center for Educators in School also offers free field trips to the Stephen A. Our Center for Educators in School also offers free field trips to the Stephen A. Schwartzman Building, featuring the Polinsky Exhibition of the New York Public Library's treasures, and workshops for educators to build their knowledge and understanding of civic themes and how to bring them into the classroom. This fall, we're hosting civics workshops for educators to help them teach their students how to use library resources to conduct historical and contemporary research on housing activism and regulation, aligned with the New York City Public Schools' new seal of civic readiness. Our recent work to inform voters and engage citizens is supplemented by long-time initiatives, such as offering our branches as polling sites. Four of our libraries will serve as voting locations in the upcoming November election. We also continue to play a role in participatory budgeting processes with the City Council and the Civic Engagement Commission. The library not only submits potential projects of its own for these initiatives, but serves as a safe space for New Yorkers to generate and discuss ideas and ultimately cast votes for their projects of choice. Libraries are increasingly one of the only institutions that remain trusted by a wide range of New Yorkers. Our principal committed commitment to our mission makes our branches safe spaces where everyone is entitled to the same right to information, knowledge, and the opportunity to grow. We have built on this trust to establish our pillars of civic knowledge, civic attitudes, and civic action to ultimately inform voters and engaged citizens. We are grateful for your support for these initiatives, which have taken on a consequential role within the survival of our democracy. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I remain available to answer questions. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Rivera. And the, and the members of the New York City Council. My name is Edwin Maxwell, and I oversee public service at fifty-nine of Brooklyn Public Library's locations. On behalf of my twelve-hundred-plus colleagues and every Brooklynite, I want to say thank you for your unwavering support of libraries and your resolve in fighting against the library budget cuts this past spring. It is with a joyous sigh of relief that we are back to the hours and services which our communities expect. I and all library workers look forward to the day we can go beyond restoring budget cuts and instead talk about increasing the hours that are available to our neighbors. Voter turnout in New York City is lower than ideal. We believe it is our responsibility as a city-funded organization to help with nonpartisan voter education and engagement. And BPL takes this duty seriously. Every branch carries and promotes voter registration forms in the languages of their neighborhood. BPL uses our digital screens, website, and social media to provoke, to promote upcoming elections and the voter registration deadlines. Our branches also host voter registration drives with organizations like League of Women Voters, Brooklyn Voters Alliance, and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. I am personally proud that sixteen BPL branches serve as polling sites during general elections. This is no easy task. Our staff arrive at five AM to open libraries, and we're there until eleven PM, way beyond normal hours. Everyone, including our custodial team, public safety officers, branch staff, and administrative staff, assist with all hands-on-deck effort to make sure voters have a nearby, safe place to vote. With partners like the Campaign Finance Board, BPL branches hold rate-choice voting seminars, what's-on-the-ballot sessions, and other programs that demystify voting by explaining what voters can expect at the polls. Staff may book lists serve as guides for patrons interested in learning more about what is happening in the news, political and otherwise. BPL's five adult learning centers help adults develop their reading and writing skills, finish their high school equivalency diploma, and learn English. These centers have long integrated voter education and civic participation into their curriculum. This year, we're offering voter and election-themed swag to excite program participants about this year's election. BPL's teen tech center staff and YA librarians encourage sixteen and seventeen-year-olds in our teen program to preregister to vote, while our reentry navigators help formerly incarcerated patrons to understand their rights and re-register the vote if necessary. For this election season, we're offering a special Cash Your Vote Storytime to encourage patrons and caregivers to register to vote. In these storytimes, kids vote on the next books they'll read or which song they'll sing while adults are shown how to check their voter registration status. We encourage program participants and everyone here to take your kids to vote with you and be a role model. Studies show that parents and caregivers who vote have children who vote. This program communicates that. We are very thankful to the city council for generously funding this program through the city's First Readers Initiative. What I've described to you is a lot, and it takes a lot of effort to make it happen. But this is just the start of the civic engagement that happens in libraries. Library workers are dedicated to building community, fostering neighborhood connections, and increasing civic literacy. We intentionally cultivate a sense of belonging at our branches, from our programs to our emphasis on intellectual freedom, all with the larger goal of empowering our patrons. BPL offers twenty volunteer-led conversation groups for English language learners each week and monthly community dinners for those re-entering society after incarceration. Almost every week, a city council member, city agency, or city commission utilizes a branch for office hours to, or a program to invite neighbors to participate in our city's government. These programs deliberately center collaborative engagement to instill a sense of belonging and community. As a society, we find it harder to talk about what's meaningful to us without relying on political cliches, especially online. BPL has launched a variety of programs to address this, including Anthem to Us, a recently concluded program with NYPL, QPL, and the Lincoln Center for Performing Arts. It invited all voices to join to create a contemporary national anthem echoing our collective hopes. A hundred participants embarked on this immersive writing workshop series, and three of these anthems were performed live at Lincoln Center on July sixth of this year. In our Twenty-Eighth Amendment program, BPL invited Brooklynites to the town hall meetings to debate ideas and suggest language that they would like to see in a new amendment to the Constitution, decades after the last amendment was issued in nineteen ninety-two. During the twenty-twenty election cycle, we helped residents find their voice with I Wish to Say, a program before the election which invited patrons to dictate messages which would be mailed in January to the next US president. Working with the nonprofit new organization The City, we have begun to establish newsrooms at branches to facilitate information exchange. Residents develop newsletters which focus on what matters to them and their neighborhoods assisted by librarians and journalists. By involving residents in every step of the process, from writing articles to newsletter distribution, we strengthen these residents' bonds to their neighborhoods, their government, and to each other. These projects are not just about delivering information or providing creative outlets. They are also about cultivating empowerment and sense of belonging in one's community amongst our patrons. As your previous hearings have highlighted, this work is under threat nationwide. This October, with the American Library Association and our fellow New York City libraries, BPL is spearheading a National Day of Action to Rally for the Freedom to Read. On Saturday, October nineteenth, libraries across the country will gather their patrons and supporters to unite against book bans and demonstrate that the freedom to read is an enduring, nonpartisan American value that must be protected. Libraries are facing a dire threat, and this day of action will be one of the first times in recent memory that the American libraries have banded together to such a magnitude. Communities with vibrant public libraries are healthier and more resilient. Libraries play a role around every election, but our efforts to empower citizens through their sense of community are bigger than any election season. Thank you, Chair Rivera, and members of the committee for this opportunity to discuss this topic today.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. You just gave me such a nice memory, too, because, you know, my family, we, we dress up for special occasions, right? Special events. And one would be to go to church, and another would be to get on an airplane, which was like a very big deal, especially, you know, when you don't grow up with a lot of money, it's like a privilege to get on an airplane and go somewhere. And then the, and then the third one that clearly comes to mind is that my family would dress up to go vote. It was like such an important moment that they wanted to just put their best foot forward, so to speak. And so I can recall, like, going into the booth and, I can't tell you what was on the ballot, that didn't even matter at, at the time. It was just the moment of being next to my grandparents or my mom, and then that's when we had the curtain, and we had to pull the switch, and it was, um, the lever. And I just remember thinking, well, this was something that I get to do soon, you know? So, um, so thank you for that, because I, I do think it's important, as we look to emulate our role models, that those, they typically start at home, those people. So thank you so much again for, for your testimony. You know, you mentioned the I Wish to Say program, which you did in twenty twenty. Will you do that program again to send messages to the next?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, sure. Well, I will ask you all the question of, you know, the budget cuts in a second, because I know that every single program and how you support your staff and the ability to get things done also requires a reliable partnership with the city. And so I know that when, as November approaches, I can't help but feel a bit anxious. I don't want, I don't want to feel that way. I want it to be that we're not, you know, bargaining or negotiating for restoration, but rather we're looking at what's next, the future, and expansion of clearly programs that work. But I, I did just want to ask, because I, I thought, I also remember, like, writing the letter, like, dear Mr. President. So we'll see. But you also mentioned you use digital screens, website, and social media used to, to promote elections. What do you think has been the most effective in promoting elections or just voter registration? I know you all give out the actual guides. Do you give out the, the paper versions? I know some people prefer, even people on this very dais prefer the paper form over an electronic version. So what do you think has been the most effective in, in reaching individuals in, in terms of voter information and participation?
Yeah, it's difficult to say what one particular measure is the one, right, that is getting people out to vote. But I think just having a presence and making those, uh, materials available, having people available to explain. As you mentioned, coming from, uh, certain neighborhoods within the city, I'll say. It wa, it's not always pushed to the forefront of everyone's mind of voting season. So I think having a presence at the library, constantly promoting it through the various methods that we were speaking about, just being there and knowing that you can get the information so that if, um, you're hesitant, as we know, uh, many of our, uh, residents here are, having someone to speak to, knowing that there's someone on staff. That's why we're so proud to have so many branches participate, uh, throughout the city. Just being there and just being, and being visible and being someone, a place of comfort that people can ask questions and learn about how to be more civically engaged. So I think it's cumulative, all of those things.
Yeah, I, I'll echo my, my colleague in terms of what we do. I had the opportunity to be out a couple of weeks ago, um, right before National Voter Registration Day out in Jackson Heights, doing voter registration out on, uh, Eighty-second and Thirty-seventh Avenue, and had the opportunity to speak with a lot of residents. What they appreciated was our visibility. What they expected was our participation. And so, uh, when we asked people, do you know where your polling sites are? They said, the library, they could point right there, whether it was a vote, early vote, early voting site or an election day site. Making sure that our staff are equipped with not only the information, but also prepped to know how to help individuals. Other languages, people walk into the library, they want to know. I, I was stunned in a weird way when I got to meet people who were in their seventies, had said they had never registered before, had been, you know, citizens, had been here, but they felt that it was important and they were happy to see that we were out there. People from upstate, uh, who were visiting had walked by and said, I, you guys are here on the street. And in my, you know, in my town upstate, they would never do this. And so making sure that we are visible in every way, shape, or form, whether that's on social media, whether that is in our branches, whether that is at, you know, street fairs, talking to everybody, making sure that they know that we're still trusted institutions, that we have the information, that it's accurate, that it's reliable. So, uh, to echo, making sure that we are everywhere and, and can deliver that information to everybody regardless of the format.
Okay, now I'm on. Hi. Okay, so, um, I echo everything that they've already said. What I will add to it is that I, I also believe that for us, the work that we've done with our teens, the in-person programming that we do, where people are able to ask questions, you participated in one, that does something for people when they feel like they can connect with the people who are in these positions. I also think that it's really important that when they come to our programs and they get to understand what are the other opportunities that they have to be engaged in their elections, understanding what other positions that they should be thinking about in terms of voting outside of mayor or outside of presidential. Those are huge opportunities that create long-lasting impact. Um, and really for the teens, I mean, you, you, you mentioned about budget, right? We, we offer these internships to the teens. These are paid internships. We can only do things like that if we constantly have the funding to do that. And so it's really important that we are able to continue to do those types of things. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Because I just want to echo, uh, what Dr. Neil said. One of the biggest things that we do at libraries, we all kind of talked about cultivating the next generation of voters, right? So I, I want to make sure that we emphasize that. So with the teen program, then like I spoke about with the children's programs, one of the biggest things that we can do to impact voter turnout is build the next generation of voters. And I think that's something that we all do very well and are conscious of.
I want to add one more thing. You have to keep adding whatever you like, okay? This is, this is about hearing from you.
I also want to say that what we noticed during the pandemic, when a lot of people didn't have access to internet and, and, and even the devices, right? The fact that we all introduce online programming, that continues to be a huge part of where we are seeing participation. And so being able to offer online information and programming about what's happening with, um, voting has been another area that I think has been a big turnout for us as well.
Okay, I couldn't let them just keep going. I had to throw one in. The other part of this is, and I'll speak to our teens, but I think this is also true for our adults. And that is, uh, investing in their awareness of things beyond sort of the voting process. And so, um, high community engagement and awareness. And so what we've done, and I think all of us have spoken about this, um, with our adults, with our young people, is making them more aware of some of those larger issues, whether that is poverty, whether that is child welfare. You know, getting them involved or thinking about what's going on, what they see every day, and how that affects them. And so being able to get them invested in those types of issues, there's a natural correlation between that and now being able to do something at the, in the voting booth. And, and not just the voting booth, but also looking at things like the community boards and the civic associations and the city council. And so getting people really invest in what's going on around them in a lot of different ways will naturally sort of direct them to, well, now that I know about it, what can I do about it?
You know, I would, you mentioned adults in that, in, in your testimony. I appreciated the work that you're doing with people who are currently and formerly incarcerated. You know, for anyone who was ever stood on the street for You know, for anyone who has ever stood on the street for any cause, whether political or not, you know, there's this, eventually you get to the point in the conversation where you're like, well, you know, to, to make this change, you should register to vote, right? That, that'll come up at some point. And I can't tell you how many people I've spoken to who would say something like, you know, I actually served, like I, I did, I did time, I, I was previously incarcerated, I can't vote. And I do think there is this, there are many, many misconceptions about who can and who cannot vote. So I just want to thank you for, you know, doing the work, you know, on the island and off the island and, and just making sure that we're in connection with those individuals because they certainly have rights as well. Just to go back to your teens, I, I remain impressed by the young people that walk through the doors of your libraries. They are incredible people. I wish I had 50% of like the capacity and the, just sort of the awareness that they exhibit. And I was very proud to, to participate in, in that panel. You have an online author talk, you said, held by teens? You said that I think in your testimony, I think that's, that's so interesting. Because I do feel as, I don't know, I guess it's, I don't want to say controversial, but as, as deep as the discussion is about access to online and digital platforms, I do think that space is so important to have that discussion about books and literacy and, and the topics that are involved that affect our everyday life. So we would love to continue promoting that, you know, from our office and I think in the council. We think that, I think that's very, very cool. Just one question because I see one of my colleagues wants, wants to ask. You know, in terms of contact, in terms of being able to speak to people in their own language, you all mentioned language access, incredibly important. And just for Queens, I mean, I used to be the chair of the hospitals committee. And they would say that in Elmhurst Hospital, you could probably hear in a single day over a hundred languages, right? They call it the world's borough for a reason. But I know that throughout all of our branches, people are commuting, they're visiting, they're going to appointments and they're stopping at a branch. And they don't necessarily speak English or Spanish or Mandarin or Cantonese or, or whatever it is. And so if you can just, I guess, expand on how the council can be helpful in expanding any sort of language access programs you all have, especially when it comes to voter engagement. I, I would love to hear just a little bit about that. Especially the, the, I know you're also doing classes, citizenship, just learning. I've done actually Government 101 at the Tompkins Square Branch a couple of times, so that's a lot of fun. I mean, that's in English, but if you all can just expand a little bit on language access programs and what you're doing and how the council can be helpful. And then we'll go to Councilmember Carr. Oh, we've also been joined by Councilmember Ung and Hanks.
So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the, a couple of things that we have going on the English language line that provides translation services for the public. I think Chair, what you mentioned in terms of the classes and the, we talked about We Speak New York, we talked about our ESOL conversation groups, we talked about all of those different sort of, I think, foundational pieces that we rely on funding, we rely on support to continue those services. We've expanded that type of access in terms of languages into other areas. So looking at our programming and making sure that our programming at different points is conducted in other languages, whether that's a storytime, whether that's an author talk, those have been some of the things that we've been trying to, and have really, I think, put an effort into making sure that it's accessible. Looking at our international collections and making sure that we have books and resources within different libraries that cater to that neighborhood, but also expanding beyond that. And then now looking at with our civic literacy components, looking at making sure that we are doing things like these discussion groups or idea sessions where we're talking about the participatory budgeting and making sure that that's being done in other languages so that we can connect with people. And so I think all of those things collectively are ways in which we've been able to, to, I think, live up to the moniker as the most diverse borough in, in the world. But I think the support from the city council has been and continues to be essential to making sure that we can deliver those services to everyone and not have to worry about disruptions or reductions, so.
I'll go next. So thank you for this question. We, we do quite a lot. What I would like to say is, you know, we also participate with the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs and we offer We Speak, so we do a bunch of that. We also have our new program that we launched to really help a lot of the asylum seekers. We noticed that the people who were coming in were really at a beginner level that wasn't really at where we did our series-based programming. And so through the use of Mango Languages and now through the use of the We Speak program, the beginners program, we have expanded that and that has been a great partnership in order to do that. I would also like to say that obviously funding is needed. Translation of the materials that we provide, whether it's our political materials, whether it's our materials, just in, in everything that we do in terms of offering our services requires quite a bit of funding, so helping with that is a big need. We also have invested in what we call ILA devices. These are new devices that will allow people who are able to come into our branches. And to try to describe it a bit, it's a tablet that is kind of two-sided. And basically you can just touch it and you would speak in your language. And in reverse, it's going to speak English to me. And then in reverse, when I say whatever I say back to you, it will speak it in your language. These devices have been instrumental in a lot of the outreach that we're doing in our communities because we are able to help people with a variety of different languages. Once again, that comes at a cost, so that's, that's really important. And then lastly, I would like to say, one of the things that we've also done at the New York Public Library is to really think about expanding people's knowledge outside of just access to ESOL. And we've done that through our entire adult services collaboration. And what I mean by that is not only do we provide ESOL help, we now provide digital literacy help that goes in partnership with the programming that they come in for. Not only do we do that, but we also now offer workforce development that also comes as programming with that. And those are electives that they can choose to do. This past spring, we offered a podcasting course. And it was really great to see people provide podcasts in their own native languages so that they can offer that to their families and friends. And so that's just some of the work that we've done.
Agreed. I don't, I don't think I can say anything different from my colleagues. We share all of, all of the same struggles and successes. I just want to highlight again that the best way to help is through that funding source. Like both of my colleagues spoke about our language capacity in the branches, even with all our devices and all our efforts don't match the language capacity of our residents. So funding helps us employ more multilingual staff members, expand these programs that we, that we're speaking of, the We Speak program amongst others. So that would be the greatest use to us, you know? Everything is going to come down to funding. I know you said that we'll talk about that in a moment, but that is the greatest way. And I would also, I know that you have done programs and used your multilingual abilities in, in NYPL and Queens branches, and we always will invite you out to Brooklyn as well.
Well, I can't wait to go because you mentioned voter, voter like swag. And you all have like a rap for the swag, like I just want to say. I have like a tote with a pigeon DJing. It's like iconic, but I just want to thank you all. And listen, you know, the, the budget conversation is going to be intertwined and everything. So let's just, let's just say what it is. It's going to be important in the work that you do and how you're promoting the citizenship study groups to help soon-to-be citizens prepare for the US Citizen test in order to keep going with the Teen Civic Ambassadors, with neighbors' meet and chat sessions. All of that is contingent upon what you're able to do and how you're able to support your own staff with a living wage. So with that, I'm going to go to Councilmember Carr.
Thank you Chair Rivera. This is an important hearing. So glad to have our colleagues from the three library systems with us today. You know, you have an important mission here and it's a difficult one. Because when public institutions like libraries and schools engage in education and informational efforts about politics and events, particularly contemporary politics and events, there's a high standard of objectivity that the consumers of those efforts are going to have, particularly parents of youth who are coming to you for that kind of, that kind of an effort. And there's, you know, everyone's antennas are up, right? For you to kind of breach objectivity and in their view, you know, start teaching or promoting a position with which they do not agree. And then there are some, this is a smaller group, who actually want you to take a position in some cases. So can you talk to me in terms of how you're curating these efforts and, and managing these efforts in a way that, that is objective in your view and how it conforms to that standard?
Thank you for the question. We take our position as a trusted institution very seriously. And it's, it's something we do not want to threaten. We don't want to breach the community and the public's trust. So we, we pride ourselves really on one, training. We make sure that our staff understand really the facts from the fiction. We understand our position as a nonpartisan institution. We make sure to either be completely sort of out of the conversation or if we're going to be, and I think I'll speak for everybody, I'll, I'll throw this out, you guys can correct me. But it's the idea of being a safe space that allows discourse in a civil manner and allowing whatever side of the issue you happen to be on for both sides, for all sides to have an opportunity to speak what their truth is. We are simply the place where they all can convene and know that it's a trusted place. And so when we are doing, whether it's a program, whether it is a speaker, whether it is classes, whatever we're doing and within, you know, those walls, whether, and those walls are not just physical walls, but digital walls, interpersonal walls. We're making sure that we are sort of right down the middle, that we are still that safe space. And all of that goes into our trainings, our information, how we prepare our staff, the information that we, we research to make sure that it is factual. All of that goes into sort of our standing. And like I said, we take that very seriously. So those are the things that we make sure that we have in place.
I mean, I completely, I think he really answered that really well. I will also say that, you know, one of the things for us is that we really rely solely on information available. And so we ensure that all voices are represented. That's part of what we do as a library. And so, you know, our, our theme is libraries for everyone, if you've seen our swag. You do have that one? Okay, great. And so, right, we, we simply just want to make sure that people have the information they need to make informed decisions. And that's really the goal and we do that in a non-bipartisan way.
Yeah, I don't think I can say anything different. I just want to again highlight the beauty of libraries, right? As we talk about being that, one of the last democratic institutions. Just like my colleague said, being that place to convene, being that place where the, all voices are equal. And we, we heavily, we heavily rely on that. And through our trainings, everything that we speak about as a library system is to point to that beauty of having that space that everyone can have safe civic discourse.
I appreciate those answers. I guess as a follow-up, right? There, there seems to be, right, because I participate in forums in my community all the time, as well as other parts of the city. And there seems to be an increasing amount of people who have the view that some viewpoints, however civilly expressed, are themselves so noxious that they don't belong in these forums, in these, in the public sphere. So, and there may be instances where I agree, right? There's a person advocates a position that I particularly find to be hateful or loathsome, but does so quite politely and civilly. So I mean, what is the standard that you employ? Do you agree with that notion? Or do you think that, you know, as long as nobody's cursing and hurling obscenities and interrupting other people, that there's a space for views that people find to be odious, right? I mean, I guess that's really the standard. And that's not so much on your informational and, and, and education packages, but if you're curating real discussions, that's going to happen, right? This is a, a city with a broad spectrum of opinion and some of it is going to be controversial and maybe even hateful to some people. And so I'm just wondering how, how do you handle those? And how do you train your facilitators and educators to handle those situations?
I mean, I think one of the first things I think about is, you know, obviously we are about freedom of speech. But we're also about respect and, and at the beginning of all of our programs, especially ones in which we're engaging in that dialogue of that conversation, that is something that we make sure that people know that this is a place where we want to ensure that that happens. Whether someone flies off the handle or not is a whole other thing, but we go in with that goal in mind.
I will echo that in terms of leading with respect. And, you know, respect and understanding how to de-escalate situations is again, goes back to training. I, I cannot stress enough the amount of training that is done with our staff, especially around sensitive topics and sensitive issues. And, you know, it seems like that's every day in all issues. But making sure that our staff are equipped on how to address those issues in a respectful and civil, it's still called civil discourse with the civil being, you know, I think paramount to it. So making sure that we have the disclaimers as well and letting people know that this is a topic that may rile people up. And it's of a sensitive nature, so you always have sort of that ground rules piece that sort of sets the stage. And then also knowing when, you know, the discourse and the conversation has sort of reached its apex and knowing how to now say, okay, we've, this has gone as far as it can possibly go and still maintain respectability and a, a civil nature and knowing how to then kind of move out. So making sure that our staff are, are aware of that, making sure that any facilitators that are coming in from the outside are aware of that. Yeah, I think that's sort of kind of how we look at it as well.
Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. No, it's an important question and we, freedom of speech is important, but also intolerance, but that hate is not accepted and it's a sometimes difficult space to navigate. And also you want to ensure that people feel protected, including your own staff. I want to add that we've been joined by Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember, you had a question?
Thank you so much Chair and good morning. I'm just going to ask all the questions and you could answer them afterwards because one of them is pretty long. So as some of you may know, Clarendon Library and the Clarendon Branch in my district has been closed for a considerable amount of time, maybe over three years now. During its closure, local residents and families seeking library services have been referred to a one-day-a-week mobile library to replace the services typically offered by the full branch. How would you describe the services being provided by the mobile library in comparison to what would normally be available at a fully operational branch, particularly in terms of programming such as literacy programs, educational workshops and what we're here for today, civic engagement efforts? What steps is BPL taking to ensure that the community, especially children and families, continue to receive access to civic information while the Clarendon Library Branch remains closed leading up to the vital election on November 5th? Second question, second question to echo Chair Rivera's questions on language access and diversity. Given the large immigrant population in the Clarendon and Rugby Branch service areas in my district, what specific efforts are being made to provide multilingual, multilingual programming and resources such as legal workshops or ESL classes to support immigrants in their path to citizenship to ensure equitable access to library services? Thank you.
I'll take the first part of that question. So as far as Clarendon, DDC has told us that we can expect to open in 2025. And we're, we're aware, right? We've gone through one of We've gone through one of the largest innovations as a public library system over the last few years, and will continue over the next couple of years. And we're aware that we want to make sure that every neighborhood has the correct access, the right amount, the access that you spoke about, that it would happen if their library was open. So we have kind of changed philosophies on how to service neighborhoods and when a branch is closed. Traditionally, we did have like a, a mobile, or a, a mobile bus a couple of times a week. But we've looked to do, and to have services that far expand that. So one of the things that we're doing now is making sure that that staff from that library, that the community has gotten comfortable with remains in that area. So, it heavily relies on partnerships in the area so that we can continue to have the same amount of programs there. And that is in addition to having mobile services, right? So, I think that combination of the two things, so that we're not just heavily relying on one or two times a week having mobile services, but really having a commitment to work with the community partners within that neighborhood to continue to provide those programs and services while the branch is under renovation. But we hope to get Clarendon back soon.
I thank you for that response. And I think that while BPL is a great partner with my district, the problem that I have was we were told that it was going to open back in the fall. So if you say you're trying to service all districts, all neighborhoods, here's a district and an area that is being disproportionately marginalized because contractors are not doing their job, which means now you have a population of folks that are not getting civic engagement opportunities because you're not doing your due diligence. So whether if it's EDC, DDC, or BPL, we should all be coming together to ensure that there are civic engagement classes for our youth. The once-a-week mobile is not going to work. And most parents don't feel comfortable having their children on the mobile site, just so you all are aware. I think it's unfair, it's unethical, and we need to do a better job after this hearing to ensure that we get the site open this fall. We have a very important job to take care of in November, and we have about a month to get it done and to get people engaged. There's no reason why this library shouldn't be open, just because of the HVAC system. It's not fair.
Yep, I absolutely agree, and we're willing to do whatever we can, and we would love to work with you even more on. And I know you have been a strong supporter of that community.
The best way we could work together is to get this library open this fall.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. So, you know, Councilmember Lewis brought, brought up a, a good point in terms of civic engagement. I know that your sites have been doing tons of information and resource sharing. Also ranked choice voting, I think that's, that's going to be important. It confuses to be, did I say it confuses? It continues to be, you know, something that we receive a lot of inquiries about, just really trying to understand it. It, it's, it's new. It's new to, to the system, and I think that's fair for, to take a while for people to, to truly catch on. So, you all do all of that, but you also serve as polling sites. So how many of your branches, I know in Queens, for example, you mentioned you have 11 poll sites on election day and early voting. But how many of your branches are serving as polling sites in the upcoming election? And does this produce any logistical or financial strain on these local branches?
Yeah, as I testified too, we have 16 in Brooklyn. Of course, just like I mentioned in the testimony, does it produce a hardship? Yes, but I think that, again, this is something that we're committed to as our obligation as a public library. So, the strain that it puts on it, again, all of that falls on our staff members. Like I said, we have to, typical hours, as the branch staff would come in at 9:45, 10 o'clock, people are volunteering to come in at 5 o'clock in the morning, right? To make sure that the library is open and make, to make sure that the polls are set up for people to vote. And then we stay towards the end. Typically that ends around 11, but we all know that backend work usually takes longer. So people, the staff that are volunteering, and again, volunteering to do this, to come in because this is that important to them. So, it does create some hardship, but it's something that we're happy to do.
And this is also the opportunity for you all to, to let us know how we can better support your civic engagement efforts, not only in a crucial presidential election year, but also more generally, if you want to bring that in.
I will let you know, for Queens, we have 10 sites that will be polling sites for the general election. And starting October 26th, we will have two early voting sites. As far as sort of the hardships, it, it, it is difficult. Programming is tough during those times because when we have the voting locations, we're not able to do programming in those rooms. And our programming is popular. You know, we have, you know, 987,000 people that come to our programs last year in fiscal year. What can be done, I think beyond the election cycle, this particular cycle? For us, I, it's really looking at access and information. People are curious about how local government works. I was thrilled to hear Chair that you were participating in, you know, civic literacy-related programming. Our, our constituents want to meet their elected officials. They want to, to talk with you, they want to hear from you. Having you come and do office hours in our branches has been, you know, really positive. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback from our customers wanting more when we do things about the community boards and knowing how they operate and how people can get involved. So I think for us, it's, it's having or continuing to have access to you, to hear from you, to know that our, our patrons can, can speak with you. And being able to continue that two-way dialogue within our spaces.
I echo everything you just said. For us, we have four polling sites, largely in part because our process, how it works is that we work the Board of Elections. And so they, they choose and kind of nominate where they would like to hold the elections within our branches. So, we do have four. Okay, excellent. Well, thank you, thank you very, very much. I don't have any further questions. I just wanted to, to thank you. I know you have. In order for you to continue the work that you're doing, whether it's, you know, Storytime, Cast Your Vote, or whether it's Teen Civic Ambassadors, or actually Mythbusters Political Parties, which I thought he keyed that up for you. But I thought, you know, your answers on how you keep things absolutely neutral in the most positive and beneficial way in order to fully informed, and fully inform the voter, the person, regardless of whether they, they can register or not, was great. And I, and I think you said it very well, Doctor, that our libraries play consequential role in the survival of our democracy. So I thank, I thank you all for your work. I'm excited to, to see you and/or your colleagues out in the field at these branches, and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I now open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times as such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table further. Members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic. How Libraries Empower New Yorkers to Become Informed Voters and Engage Citizens. If you have a written statement or additional written, written testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. I will now call the first panel. I want to call is Dalvin Bartley joining us via Zoom?
Starting time.
He may not be there. That's okay. I will, I will do a callback after the next person. Tom, Thomas Gogan?
Good evening. Thank you. Good morning Chair Rivera, and any other council members who are currently present. I'm Tom Gogan. I am representing myself as well as the Move the Money New York City Coalition. First speaking for myself, I am a regular user of both the Brooklyn Public Library, my own neighborhood, which is over in Park Slope, not, not a typically underserved neighborhood for sure. But nonetheless, we've experienced the very same cuts that the rest of the city experienced and want to express my pleasure at, and thanks to the City Council and to you Chair Rivera for your own efforts and for all of your colleagues who fought hard to restore, you know, as much funding as you were able to claw back this year. Unfortunately, we have, we still have a long way to go in terms of proper funding for both the library system and the many other services that our city is lacking, especially in communities that are so hard-hit, our immigrant, our working-class, brown-black communities. I also represent the Move the Money New York City Coalition. And I want to talk about something that was touched on today, and it's very important, and that's the subject of banning books and the relationship to civic engagement, as well as the notion of banning ideas. Because book banning and banning ideas are really on the same spectrum somewhere. And we are living in a society which currently seems to have banned one topic. You could say that I'm part of a marginalized group in a sense, not in the usual senses of identity, but in the sense of, there are a lot, there are many of us out there. In fact, our group Move the Money has collected well over 3,000 signatures over the last couple of years from our fellow New Yorkers who want to talk about the role of militarism in our society and the fact that it's so much of our budget is distorted by the fact that our city contributes literally tens of billions of dollars every year to the federal government and our taxes that don't get back to us in the form of help for our libraries, to help all the wonderful programs our libraries are doing, and of course, all the many other programs that we need and want in this city. And again, Chair Rivera, I do want to thank you for your efforts in, in that respect as well. And I guess my time is up. I could go on and on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. We're going to go back to Dalvin Bartley on Zoom.
Starting time.
Thank you for this opportunity to submit testimony on behalf of Generation Citizen at the New York City Council Committee on Cultural Affairs, Library, Arts and International Intergalation. My name is Dalvin Bartley, a Mid-Atlantic Senior Program Manager at Generation Citizen. Via our community-based civics curriculum, secondary school students apply social studies learning to the real world by studying and advocating on an issue of importance in their community. Today, I'm excited to testify about our voter education, engagement, and registration activities in New York City during this important election year to inform this hearing on how libraries empower New Yorkers to become informed voters and engaged citizens. Libraries are vital in fostering engaged voters by providing essential resources and programs. They offer access to unbiased information about elections, voter registration assistance, and educational materials on civic engagement. Libraries also serve as neutral spaces for community discussions and debates, allowing citizens to learn about different perspectives and make informed decisions. Additionally, we often partner with local organizations to host voter registration drives and events, ensuring that all members of the community have the opportunity to participate in the democratic process. Libraries play a crucial role in empowering New Yorkers to become informed voters and engaged citizens. And Generation Citizen partners with the New York Public Library to build relationships with our school partners and provide them with, with support researching their focus issues. Our programs and resources provide essential tools for understanding complex issues, evaluating candidates, and participating in the democratic process. Through our RISE, Registering, Informing, Supporting, and Empowering Vote 2024 Voter Activation Campaign, Generation Citizen has created a toolkit and resources for teachers in 11th and 12th grade classrooms to inform, educate, and register 17 and 18-year-old students who will be eligible to vote in November 2024. Generation Citizen hopes to continue partnering with the Council and New York Public Library to continue bringing
Thank you, your time has expired.
Thank you for considering this testimony.
Thank you so much, and I, I look forward to reading your full testimony submitted to the Council. And, and, and thank you for the RISE program and the work that you do with young people. If there's anyone else who wishes to testify, I just want to remind you to fill out a slip with the Sergeant-at-Arms. Okay, that includes the in-person portion of our public testimony, as well as the portion of the remote testimony. Seeing no one else who wishes to testify, this hearing is adjourned. Thank you everyone.